I'd like to read a declaration by our governor. On March 13, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott issued a declaration of emergency as a result of the COVID-19 virus outbreak. Excuse me. Subsequently, on March 16, 2020, pursuant to the authority granted in the declaration, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended the application of certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, in order to permit telephonic open meetings. This was an effort to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus by avoiding large group meetings while still ensuring continued governmental operations and preserving transparency in the decision-making process. Pursuant to this authority, Tarrant County College District gave notice of its intent to conduct today's work session meeting as a telephonic and video conference open meeting. Four trustees participated in person for this meeting. Myself, Conrad Heed, Mr. Kenneth Barr, Mr. Greenhill, and Mr. Hornsby. Dr. Diane Patrick, Dr. Gwellyn Morrison, and Ms. Teresa Ayala will participate via video conference or telephonically. I'll now call to order the March 11, 2021, work session meeting of the Board of Trustees. We have one public comment, I believe, and that's Dr. Morrison.
Well, thank you, Mr. Heed. Good afternoon. I want to say that I know this is a very special time in the minds of anybody who's in education, because this is a week before spring break. And even though some people are saying cancel spring break in the minds of anybody connected with education, spring break must go on. So I hope everybody has some special plans, even if it means just taking a walk in the park, spending extra time with your family or without your family, so that you can reset, revive, and regenerate. This is also Women's History Month, and in case you haven't heard, the theme this year is "Valiant Women of the Vote." So I want to take a minute to give honor to my predecessors and co-laborers. At the time I was elected to this board in 1976, there were or had been other women-elected officials in the county: State Representative Chris Miller, State Senator Betty Ann Duhar, TCC trustee Dr. May On, which probably preceded all of those, and Mrs. Audrey Trammell. So since the time that I've joined the board, we have had, on our board, Mrs. Louise Affaban, who served 30 years, Dr. Diane Patrick, Ms. Teresa Ayala, and myself. So I want to recognize Tarrant County College as a leader in equity, certainly on the board from its inception, but also, I'm hoping, within the ranks of our faculty, staff, and administrators. And I want to encourage all of us who are in any position, whether it's affluence or influence or confluence, to be aware that the voice we have is unique to us, and we must use it, not only for the good of ourselves, but for the greater good. So thank you for that opportunity to speak and to encourage everyone to be kind, to honor, and take a pause and listen to the woman that you have the privilege of having in your life. Thank you, and I will have some other questions and comments later that I would want to have some, to bring some questions forward to get some future answers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well said. Thank you, Dr. Morrison, and Mr. Greenhill.
I wanted to bring to your attention that trustee Patrick and I had a telephone conversation with Senator Powell yesterday or the day before yesterday. It was very successful. And I would like to, as I've said before, encourage all of us, trustees, to connect with any legislator or legislators that you know to promote the Community College Formula ask for this session. And if you have any interest in doing so, please contact me. I can help you get in connection with people or whatever. I just wanted to encourage you that this is an important legislative session. There's not going to be, there's going to be some lot of competition for money. And I think that the TACC and CATT have a really good plan this year to keep community college on a stable economic platform. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenhill. We'll move on to Item 3, Review of Board Business Items. We want to review the February 11, 2021, work session meeting minutes. Anybody have any comments, questions, suggestions? If not, we'll move to 3B, Approval, at least Consideration of the February 25, 2021, Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes. Anybody have any comments, questions?
Hello, Mr. Heed. This is Teresa. How are you today?
Go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to make note that there was a reference to Father Hasso and about his passing, and I wanted to just clarify that it was not due to COVID. If that could be removed, please, from the minutes.
Well noted. Any other observations?
Thank you very much.
Then we'll move on to Item 3C, Consideration Approval of Order Adopting Polling Locations and amended order of election. Ms. Carol Bracken.
Good afternoon, President Heed, trustees, Chancellor Giavonini. You're being presented with an order very much like the one you saw at our last meeting. The only difference is that the county has now established the locations for early voting and, excuse me, for voting, and that's been reflected in this revised order. Other than that, it's the same as what you saw in the previous month. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Carol. Item 3D, Chancellor Review Committee Report.
Thank you. I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Heed. At the October 15 board meeting, we conducted our annual evaluation of the chancellor, and it was agreed at that time that we needed, as a board, needed a little bit more time in this process and thought we, I think, the general consensus is that we could do a more effective job if we had a little bit more time. President Heed appointed a committee comprised of myself, Mr. Greenhill, and Dr. Patrick to work on this. We have done that, and we submitted a report, which all the members of the board should have received probably yesterday. In that report, we make some recommendations about dates of when various things should occur. Our main objective is to gain a little more time from when we get the initial material until we have to make a decision, and also to provide the board with a greater opportunity to have discussions among the members about where we are and where things are headed. So our recommendation is that the chancellor would submit materials to the board at the board work session in September each year, that at the board meeting in September, we could get additional material and could, at that point, meet an executive session with the, amongst, with the board members, and could meet with the chancellor if that was the board's desire at that time. And we would agree on the evaluation form to be used at that time. That's the September board meeting. If we needed additional material, we'd have the option of requesting that and having it by the end of September. Then, at the October board work session, the board will meet with the chancellor in executive session for the annual evaluation and agree or work on chancellor's goals for the new year. And at the October board meeting, the board would consider and approve any employment agreement modifications or, and/or adjustments to compensation or benefits, and provide the chancellor with written goals for the new year. Page 4 of the board report illustrates how that timeline would look as it would apply to the calendar year 2021. So we would start on September 9 with the board work session, followed by September 16, and so on. Mr. Greenhill, do you have any comments, or Dr. Patrick?
I have no comments. Good work. Thank you.
Appreciate your participation. Dr. Patrick?
Thank you, Mr. Barr and the whole committee. Chancellor, do you have comments? No? Then we'll, thank you. Then we'll move on.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I'm sorry. I have some comments. First of all, this is theoretical. It's not personal. The purpose of evaluation should be to improve, to monitor and improve progress and achievement of performance. I have a concern that it seems that our board continuously changes the process. I have a concern that the process for evaluation should be known to both parties prior to the beginning of the evaluation period. And if there are changes made during the period of evaluation, it should be concurred and agreed upon by both parties. So I understand that this board is not bound by the actions of a prior board, and that future boards won't necessarily be bound by our action. However, I would hope that we can be comfortable enough in whatever decision we reach about this process that we're going to use in the few months ahead to stay with it a little bit, to have a little stability. And so I've not discussed this with the chancellor. I've not discussed this with anyone other than the chair of the committee who called to ask me if I had any concerns, and I expressed this concern to him. So it's not new that this is a concern. And one of my greatest concerns that I've been feeling lately is that we hurry up to do stuff because it's, that's how it's been scheduled. And I believe the quality work doesn't always, the best quality work or the highest quality work doesn't always come out of hurrying up and doing things to meet the schedule. So those are my concerns. I hope that they have some level of meaning to you, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Barr?
As a, thank you, trustee Morrison. As I also have been on the board longer than anyone else but Dr. Morrison, I agree with her that we have not, as a board, been very consistent with how we have reviewed the chancellor. I think this is a significant step, however, that this is the first time, and I'm very glad we're doing this, is the first time that we do have something in writing for a schedule, and it is to interview the chancellor. Usually, as you recall, Dr. Morrison, we just, all of a sudden, someone will tell us we need to review the chancellor, and we've never had a, as much detail as we've had now. So I think this is a very significant step. But also, in regard to hurrying up and so forth, there is a lot of timing that we don't have any control over. The fiscal year-end of the, of the fiscal year-end of the district is August 31. There are certain time periods that the contract has to be renewed. There are some complicated areas in this process. So what the committee did, and I want to assure you, Dr. Morrison, that I share your concern about the hectic process that we've gone in the past. What we've done here, what we've recommended here, is a systematic process. And, you know, I'm sure that if things, times change and so forth and so on, the chancellor will be involved. But I think this is a really good first, a really good step in systematically putting this down, how we're going to do this. This is the first time we've done this. So I realize your concerns, and I think, I think we've done our best to address the concerns, all of these concerns, and the committee or trustee Barr is open to any kind of suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
Yes. Dr. Morrison, I appreciate, very much appreciate your comments and understand where you're coming from. Let me make one observation. We've got a lot of people listening to this, this discussion. The only person at Tarrant County College District that works for the member, for this board, the only person is the chancellor.
Yes.
And it's, it's important that if the board has concerns about direction or compliments for work well done or whatever, that we need to take the time to do the review and to do it correctly. So this is, is not in any way intended to change the relationship between the board and the chancellor, but to give us an opportunity to stop and think about where we are, what's going on in the last year, and what the board members feel like Tarrant County College's priorities ought to be. We have a very collaborative relationship with the chancellor, and the chancellor and I have not had an opportunity, and it's my fault, an opportunity to sit down and discuss this. As we look at it going forward, he will have, I suspect, some suggestions about how we might tweak the process a little bit. So I think the committee, and I would think the board, we're all certainly open to that. Lastly, where do we go from here? And Ms. Bracken and I spoke earlier today about that, and I believe, if I understood right, Carol, the director, you recommended that we do a resolution that includes, it would be necessary to make some modifications to the chancellor's employment agreement, and that will come back to the board, can come back to the board next month, I presume. Am I stating you correctly? You're nodding your head, so I assume that's right. So we'll, we'll work with the chancellor and legal counsel to bring to board something that reflects what's been recommended and discussed, and we'll consult with the chancellor as well.
So, excuse my unreadiness. Remember I said this is theoretical, not personal? So, and I, what I intended for you to understand was that I was saying that the evaluation process should be separate and apart from any ongoing
something that reflects what's been recommended and discussed, and we'll consult with the chancellor as well.
So excuse my unreadiness. Remember I said this is theoretical, not personal? So, and I, what I intended for you to understand was that I was saying that the evaluation process should be separate and apart from any ongoing performance right now. In other words, it should be objective, not based on anything we're trying to correct at the moment. And that's, I'm hoping that everyone understood that. So I certainly appreciate the time and the effort that the committee has put into it. I appreciate the chairman reaching out to me and asking me if I reviewed it and if I had any questions. And I know that, I believe that my fellow board members, you know, we always want to get an A plus in what we're doing because we're the best board around any place. And we work so well together because we have the right goals in mind. And so my comments or sharings are, like I said, intended to move us forward, not only with today's agenda item, but in the future. And I'm hoping that perhaps even our paid professionals who do this and set up processes for this to happen throughout the organization might be allowed to just give an objective view of our process. There's nothing personal about the process. It should be a process that could be adapted for the chancellor or his staff or anybody else that chose to. So, and certainly the equity and the fairness, the objectivity that we put into what we set up as the chancellor's evaluation should be modeled in the rest of the organization, I'm hoping. So thank you for taking the time for me to make my comments, but more importantly, thank you for taking the time to try to understand my comments and their meaning. Thank you so much, Mayor Barr and Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. We always appreciate your comments and remarks. I do want to compliment the committee. The committee's been working on this for a number of months, I think four, five, six months, and I appreciate all their work and effort. This is just another example of how we're trying to continually improve our procedures and processes to make Tarrant County College that much better.
Mr. President, as a follow-up, the, you've appointed a ad hoc committee in regard to vacancies, and a draft of a procedure has been presented to the committee, and we're considering it, and we will discuss it and come back to the board with a recommendation, hopefully sooner than later.
Thank you, Mr. Greenhill. As chair of the committee, we appreciate that report. We'll now move on to item four, chancellor's overview.
Thank you, Mr. Heed. After we have about six miscellaneous items, the first being that, as you're well aware, the second round of funding from the government is coming related to the COVID-19, and that item is to extend my authority through July 1st of 2021. The, this round of funding will, needs to be expended by next January, although we don't anticipate anything needing that authority for you to ratify later at this time. This next round of funding, though, provides a lot more opportunity for the college to exercise the expenditure of that fund. So there's more flexibility there than the first go-around, so there may be items that in fact were not eligible the first go-around that may be the second. The second item is a small parcel of land northeast campus for, for sale to the individual, the entity that bought the other piece adjacent to it for their opportunity to expand their parking. The third item is the board's resolution related to their commitment, desired commitments as it relates to sustainability and technology. The, we have another item that to speak of, to establish a pool of executive search firms where we have vacancies at the vice president level and up, sometimes others as well, depending upon the position, how hard it is to recruit for. We use executive search firms to do that, and it's nice to have some competition there in a pool in which to draw from. And then we have two, a couple items dealing with, one with grounds and maintenance as well as job order contracting for, job order contracting pools, that is, again, an opportunity to, to bring together various entities that could bid and compete for the jock contracts. We have two capital improvement items, one dealing with thermal plumbing, our thermal piping at the south campus, and then the attention that the gym and pools at the northeast campus need. Thank you, Mr. Heed.
Thank you, chancellor. We'll now move on to item five, which is the review of the proposed consent agenda items for our board meeting on March 25th, 2021. And Ms. Bracken, item A is consideration approval of resolution granting authority to the chancellor until July 1st, 2021, to establish rules and procedures he deems necessary and appropriate to combat the spread of the COVID-19 virus.
Back when this COVID nightmare began for all of us, the board very kindly recognized that emergency situations might occur that would require action more quick than our normal scheduling allows. And accordingly, the board authorized the chancellor to take emergency action with the proviso that he comes back to you each month and explain the use that he has made of his authority in the previous month. In a previous board meeting, we've given you a report of the number of times he's actually used this authority. It hasn't been very many, and there haven't been any in a while. However, that's not to say that the situation has changed a great deal, so the staff is recommending that we continue this authority for another 90 days with the same requirement, that we come back to you each month and tell you the ways in which the authority has been used. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm just making sure you can hear me. You have referenced that we would continue this authority for 90 days. The last time that we approved this authority was when?
It was also for 90 days, and it comes, it's terminated on April 1st.
Okay. So it's nine, it has been nine days. And then, so we'll be having a report at this meeting as to the expenditures or not?
There has been no use of the authority in this last month.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Thank you, Ms. Bracken. We'll move on to item 5B, consideration approval of a resolution authorizing the chancellor to negotiate, execute, and close a contract for the sale of a 0.0649 acre tract on northeast campus in the amount of $173,218.50. Ms. Susan Allenese.
Sorry. That's the equivalent of you're on mute for all of our Zoom meetings these days. So as the chancellor alluded to, this is a property sale for an adjacent tract of land with an existing professional building that needs to expand its, its parking lot if we'll Sorry, I thought there would be an exhibit. There, there is an exhibit in your packet that shows where that is located, and it's just a small sliver. It is, meets or exceeds the appraised value of the property, so staff recommends moving forward with it.
Are there any other additional reasons why we shouldn't go ahead with this in terms of our students?
So the, the land is not necessary for the future use or development of the campus, and so it's sort of superfluous, and it makes sense for us to, to accept a sale and the dollar proceeds for the operations of the college.
I, I understand that it's a medical facility and that some of our students might have some opportunities there.
I'm not aware of that, but I can find out.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Bracken says yes.
Okay.
Thank, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
President Heed, just looking at the Texas Reliturs farm that's in the back of here.
Yes, I'm probably going to ask Carol. Carol negotiated that and handled those forms if there's a question.
It has Tarrant County College, not Tarrant.
Yes, yeah. We noticed that, and that was a draft agreement that I believe that they're still finalizing. It'll have a final one out to you all, so we've noted that correction.
It's pretty horrible the way it was. But Ms. Bracken is taking care of that. Okay, we'll move on to item 5C, consideration approval of a revised resolution expressing the board of trustees' commitment to innovative technology, accessibility, sustainability on new and renovated facilities, parentheses continued from February 25th, 2021, board meeting.
Yes, so this is the, the document that we discussed last month that memorialized the board's commitment to using innovative techniques in our building construction, particularly with our, our bond program as we move forward. You may recall that the day of the board meeting last month suggested changes were distributed by trustee Barr, and there, there is also a red line in your packet from the original that was proposed by staff, and a red line that reflects the changes that were advised to trustee Barr regarding his suggestions. And so we certainly welcome your, your comments back.
And the reason we continued it was because some of our trustees did not have sufficient time to study on it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Yes, I'd like, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that we go into closed session so we can address some of the concerns that I have in regard to the changes, just, just information, mostly legal, and I'd like to go into closed session.
One alternative?
Yes, today.
I was going to suggest that one alternative is to continue our way through the agenda and then hold that, we, we have other closed session items this afternoon, and so that would be an opportunity to cover it there.
I'd, I'd like to, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any, quick, any other questions, comments? We'll move on to item 5D, consideration approval of vendor pool for executive search and recruitment services with initial term of three years and the option to renew for two additional years in the annual amount of $250,000 not to exceed.
Yes, as, as the chancellor alluded to, we often use a search firm when we are hiring executives in the college, particularly with some of the academic vice presidents and presidents. And so in order to have an available pool of folks, we went through a request for, requests for proposals that we were able to identify qualified firms that, that would be available for that service. Some years it exceeds $100,000, which would require board approval. This allows us a cap of $250,000 to, to address those occasions when, when we actually have more recruitments that occur. The searches are funded through salary savings associated with vacancies.
Questions, comments?
I'd be curious.
Mr. Barr first?
Yes, go ahead.
Are these local firms or, and I don't, have we received any information about who the firms are?
Nope. The, the three firms are RH Perry, Greenwood Asher, and then Lead Exec. I don't believe any of them are local. They are firms that tend to specialize in academic recruitments, but we can certainly provide you some additional information between now and next week about their, their bios.
I think it'd be helpful to just give us a little background information on
Sure.
why these firms were selected. How many firms proposed?
I believe there were five that proposed and three were selected.
Can we have that information as well, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Comments? We'll move on.
This is Teresa Yala, Mr. Heed.
Go ahead.
Mr. Heed, can you hear me? This is Teresa Yala.
Please do.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that information.
We're losing you.
Allenese, the MWE firms, I'm sorry, you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, what are, what is the MWE percentages for these particular firms?
We'll, we'll include that information in what we distribute between now and the actual board meeting.
Any further questions, comments? Move on to item six, review of proposed individual action item, items for board meeting on March 25th, 2021. Item A is consideration approval of use of a cooperative agreement with ABM of Texas, Inc. for district grounds maintenance at select locations in the amount of $205,000 for a period of five months.
Yes, so we are at the end of an agreement with ABM to provide additional labor for grounds maintenance on our campuses. Not only do they have 100% responsibility for certain properties, but they also provide augmented resources when we have vacancies among our own staff. We're in the process and preparation for next year's budget of evaluating the appropriate balance and potentially to take more of that in-house. We're doing the financial analysis of that right now. And so what staff is recommending is that we'll use a cooperative agreement through the end of this fiscal year to continue those services while we make an ultimate recommendation around that. And then in September you would consider, or August probably, you would consider a new one-year contract in the event that that becomes the recommendation of staff.
Questions, comments? There being none, we'll move on to item 6P, consideration and approval of contract with Texas Refrigeration, Inc. for the main thermal system piping installation project on South Campus in the amount of $471,406.81.
Yes, so this is the ongoing upgrades to our infrastructure at each of our campuses. You, you've heard a number of these from other campuses as well, and so it's, it's the next iteration for South Campus to improve those, the thermal facilities.
Then we'll move on to item 6C, consideration approval of contract with GFC Contracting for the gymnasium renovation and pool equipment at the northeast campus Physical Education Building in the amount of $797,878.15.
Yes, so included in our five-year capital plan is this project associated with renovating the locker rooms as well as updating pool equipment in the adjacent space at northeast. I was asked the question about how long the renovations will take, and we believe it'll take about seven months from beginning to end. I'll also respond to a question I received separately about the utilization of the pools. Obviously, right now, those facilities aren't in use while our campuses are operating in a primarily remote way. However, they get extensive use during normal times. We have many, many partnerships with other organizations. We've been analyzing each of our pools, potential partnerships, other facilities with, with all of the campuses, and in this instance, there's about 60,000 hours that were recorded of use in 2019 during more normal operations. And so we, we think it's a, an appropriate facility to, to upgrade and continue to use.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Heed, I would ask relative to this item and the preceding item, 6B, we've issued, these are in response to RFPs.
That's correct, yes.
I think it would be helpful to the board to know if we had multiple responses. If so, why? How, how was this firm selected from the various proposers? And unless I've missed it, I don't believe we addressed minority contracting issues in either one of these contracts.
So each one of these actually, it, so we, we use best value as our analysis of the RFPs that we provide, and every one of those has weighting associated with, with MWE participation. You may recall probably a year ago, we had a discussion about reporting those out individually on each one of these versus having the more aggregate reports that are probably a better reflection of, of how we're doing as a district. And so we haven't been including that specific information in each one of these in terms of what their commitment has, is projected to be, but we can certainly revisit that. And the chancellor and I can certainly have a discussion about including additional information related to the, the responses.
Well, I certainly would invite other members of the board to provide opinions on this, but this board, I think, has made it pretty clear that on this, but this Board, I think, has made it pretty clear that we want to, we're pursuing an emphasis on spreading our business opportunities throughout the community. And I think the Board needs to be made aware, I would argue on individual contracts, but we can, I'm comfortable with discussing that later. Could we provide that information on these contracts for the board meeting?
And we agreed, if I'm not mistaken, that we would have quarterly reports, correct, Susan?
Yes, and you received the first one last month in the new format that provides aggregate data, but we could certainly provide more detail with those as well, or at the Board's pleasure, included in the individual action items. Part of the challenge with it in individual action items is it's not reflective of the overall effort, because certainly you're going to have contracts that come through that don't have any participation for a variety of reasons. And so that was sort of why we thought about doing it in the form of a quarterly report, but certainly at the Board's pleasure, we'll provide what you ask.
I would, I would comment that the Board can under, I believe the Board, I certainly speaking for myself, can understand situations where it's not an opportunity. But where there is an opportunity, I think it would be helpful for us to have some information about it.
Thank you.
And if we need to have further discussion of the Board on that point, we can schedule that in the future.
Any further comments, questions? Then we'll move on to item 6D, consideration approval of job order contract, general contractor pool, and with master agreements for initial terms of two years, and the establishment of administrative spending limits.
So I actually have a slide presentation that we will be pulling up. I hope. Maybe I'll start talking while we're working to pull that up. So job order contracting is a procurement method that's allowed under state law, and it's intended to be used for, restricted for use for minor construction, repair, rehabilitation, and alterations. I will tell you that the statute doesn't necessarily provide really clear guidance on how to define those and what those limits are. But the intent is to balance sort of the competitive procurement requirement with ease of availability of firms when you've got smaller projects that come up, or perhaps things that cannot be planned and that are of a recurring nature over time. So the other purpose that it has served for us is that it does certainly provide capacity building for smaller firms who are looking to get experience with a public entity and may not, may not be ready for some of the larger contracts that go out to individual bid. This practice has been in place at the college since 2012 when it was presented for Board approval at that time. So you may recall that we've been in the process over the last number of months of updating some of our policies related to procurement. And last month, we did, we addressed some of the realignments that needed to happen with policy. We did a couple of things. We delegated to the chancellor a number of things, including the job order contracting, excuse me, we struck some of the authority of the chancellor related to job order contracting in the policy and made it clear that we, the $100,000 limit applied not only to regular procurement, but also to construction procurement, and added some definitions around aggregate spend and so on. So we clarified that in the policy itself. So the key things that happened, again, was memorializing that threshold, but it also formalized that job order contracting and professional services pools, known as IDIQ, were methods that the college is using. However, it struck those limits of the $500,003 million that were in the original policy and indicated that whenever we would bring the pools back to the Board for approval, that at that time, the Board would authorize spending limits there rather than as part of the policy itself. So with that said, we have made that change, and this continues that effort. So what we're proposing to you here today is that we want to improve the transparency of these pools as they exist and the process that we went through to arrive at them. And so it's our recommendation that each time we bring them to the Board for approval of the pools. In this instance, for general contractors only, as RFP we just completed, there were 22 responses received. We're recommending 11 of them for inclusion to ensure availability and the right mix of skills that are available among them. About halfway was sort of the breaking point in terms of the scoring, where it was a natural break in terms of the skill sets of the groups. The other thing that we're recommending is that all individual engagements over $100,000 will continue to come to the Board, just like they do today and have for a while, even though the old policy actually allowed us not to do that, but that's been our practice. There will be a maximum for a single contract of $500,000, just like before, again, reflecting the nature of this being smaller projects, not the large projects. And then also, it will allow aggregate spend up to $1 million with an individual firm. And what that means is if you end up having a series of smaller jobs throughout the year, and they start adding up to that more than $100,000 level, we've already sought approval from the Board for us to be able to use them in that way and have aggregate spend without having an additional board action item. The prior policy actually had this at $3 million. But anyway, this is intended to be more functional for us. I will tell you that one of the things that we've been doing is as we've been getting a lot more organized about our five-year capital plan as well as our bond program, the more planning we do, the less emphasis on job order contracting will be necessary because there will be things that are planned, even classroom renovations, we've planned out five years now versus it being sort of ad hoc along the way. So with that said, I think that the use of the job order contracting pool may shrink a bit, but this will allow us, as we are applying those standards, to evaluate. The particular item in front of you assumes a two-year agreement with each one of them. It does have options to renew, but consistent with our discussions in the past, those future options we'll bring back to you because we'll want to report out how this is working and whether those thresholds make sense. The other thing that was in your packet related to this one, there it goes, you probably can't read it on the screen, but in your packet, you've got information about the 11 firms that were recommending for inclusion in the pool. And you'll note that, that most, they all have, or most of them have very substantial MWE participation as part of their commitment to the work here at the college. But in addition, you'll note where they're located. A large number of them are located here in Tarrant County, and so that's, that's good news for the organization as well. So in addition to this particular action with the general contracts, we're in the process of finalizing similar pool development with our trades groups. So, you know, plumbing, electrical, and so on. When we get through that procurement process, we will bring those pools back to the Board for consideration as well. In addition, we're still working on, on aligning the professional service pools, our practice with Board authority. And so we'll be bringing those back to you as well for things like architectural services and engineering and so on. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Heath, just, could I just observe that having raised the MWB question on the previous one, I appreciate the fact that you provided that information here.
Yes, sir.
That's great. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Heath, this is Gwen Morrison. I have a comment. I have a question about the, what happens to the other 11 who didn't meet the requirements for working with us. And I understand that we would not be in the, want to perhaps because of liability, be in a position of telling them why and what they could do in the future to do a better job of working with TCC. Perhaps that's where we could refer them to some other entity because one of the comments that I often get is, you know, number one, the question, how do I do business? And then the second comment being, it's really difficult. And so as a means of capacity building for these entities who, for some reason or the other, didn't meet our standards, if we have a third party that we can refer them to or suggest or something to help them, after all, we're not only a business, but we are a community college. And one of our jobs is to help the people in Tarrant County not only develop job skills, business skills, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I just pose that as another opportunity for us to serve our community. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And one of the things I'll note is that part of the reason that you want to limit the pool, you know, sort of this forced ranking system, is to ensure that there's enough work to go around to those groups to make it worth your time, right? And so we will notify the 11 that weren't included, but you raise a good point that there are lots of organizations, including one that you'll hear from later today, the RBCA, that are doing lots of work to do training and so on with the different businesses to improve the quality of their, of their proposals. I will tell you, when you get this many firms responding and, you know, and you force rank them essentially, it doesn't mean that they're not capable of doing work for us and so on. And so, you know, we don't want to leave the impression that they're not quality firms at all. But certainly, we'll consider opportunities to refer them to the organizations that we know that'll help them bolster their responses.
Sort of in the same vein, of course, the college does a great deal of skills training for workforce development to meet the needs of our, of our community. Is there any preference given for TCC graduates or any special development criteria that we use for those folks?
There is not. There are limits under state law in terms of how you award points through the best value process and what you can give preference for. However, what I would say is that we're going to continue to work with all of our vendors to, to create those opportunities we've talked about before for students and so on. But there is not preference specifically within, within the scoring process here.
Thank you. Any further questions, discussion? There being none, item seven, chancellor?
Thank you, Mr. Heath. You have in your packet 7A, which are the listing of upcoming facility and IT projects. And now in B, we have five different briefings today, the first of which, we're very pleased to have Ms. Kimberly Shaw with us here from the Regional Black Contractors Association. And so Kimberly?
Good afternoon. Kimberly Shaw with the Regional Black Contractors Association. I'm the president, CEO, and I hate that I couldn't join you all last time, but we were a bit under snow. So I'm happy to be here today. I'm actually glad to see some of our members on that last slide that Susan prepared. So thank you. I'm glad to know that TCC is working towards more diversity and having more diverse contractors working with the college. So the Regional Black Contractors Association, I think I have a slide presentation somewhere. Thank you. Wonderful. All right. So the RBCA is an advocacy association that promotes and advocates for black contractors. We are separate from minority contracting and that we specifically focus on the development and growth of black contractors. We realize that with MWE programs, we find that black contractors are still at the very lowest percentage. And so for that, we see an increased need for advocacy. The RBCA was founded in 2014 at the helm of a former organization called the Black Contractors Association that was dissolved, but we reinstated it, and now we are the premier advocacy association for African-American contractors in DFW, and we just opened up a Houston office. Next slide, please. We stand on our values, integrity, contribution, and excellence. Integrity, the RBCA forms relationships with key decision makers and stakeholders. We feel like the work that is going to be done or needs to be done, the decisions have to be coming from the top. They have to be influenced by the Board of Directors, by the mayors, by the city managers, and we really have to get buy-in from, from key stakeholders to say, let's execute this from the top down. And of course, we make sure that our members and everything that we do is, is with excellence. Next slide, please. Our membership base includes public and private end users, developers, real estate professionals, professional services, general contractors, construction management firms, subcontractors and trades firms, management consultants, and training organizations. And our membership is, although we are the Regional Black Contractors Association, we know that we have to do this and we cannot do this without the help of everyone. Next slide, please. This quote here by Dr. Martin Luther King, "Life's most persistent urgent question is what are you doing for others?" And I think that the RBCA, one of the things we are known for is helping others help themselves. And it's so important that we give people the tools that are necessary to help them grow and achieve their goals. And like Susan stated, we have membership on all different levels and different scales, but you have to be able to equip people with the tools necessary to really help them succeed. Next slide, please. Growing capacity is something that, that we stand for and we're very passionate about. I'll give you a quick example. In this photo here, on the left, we have Dallas County Commissioner John Wiley Price, Judge Nash, Constable Gully, some of our RBCA members, county, Assistant County Administrator Jonathan Bazan, myself. This photo here represents truly what the RBCA capacity growing model is about. With this project is the Southern Dallas Government Center, and we worked very closely with Dallas County to ensure that the developer on the project was minority, the architect was minority, the builder was a joint venture with a minority firm and a non-minority firm. And we also had the Second Chance Program on this project, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. We also have the, what's that, Texas Live and Global Life Field over in Arlington, also Tarrant County. We had the developers, Cordish Company, and Mayor Jeff Williams and City Manager Trey Yelverton were all involved in making this a success for black contractors at the prime level, along with ex-vendors, Second Chance employees working on the project. And below, right left, you have Michael Russell, who is a descendant of Herman J. Russell, iconic black real estate and construction owner. And Darryl McKissick, who, whose company ranges back to 1901, where her family was one of the first architects of trade in the United States. Next slide, please. Our Second Chance Hiring Program is probably the most, I guess, impactful aside from growing business, but this is a program that helps people that are coming home from prison who have a blemish background, and we help them receive training, and then we put them in position to get jobs. And that's in the construction-related industry. Now, we have to, again, work with our stakeholders because it starts with even legislation with allowing people the right, or, you know, having the opportunity to work on projects with their background. Now, we do have a strict vetting process and criteria, and we don't turn away people that don't meet the criteria. We help them. They just don't always get to work on some of the same projects. For instance, if there's badge and requirements, like with DFW Airport and DART, what have you, then we'll have to put them in other places. But the objective of the program is to provide skilled labor force for the, for the workforce community. We have a big gap right now in skilled labor in the construction industry. And so we're constantly working with our partners and our stakeholders to figure out ways to fill that gap and also help the community. Next slide, please. Right now, we have two different training options. We have one training option with Dallas County Community College District. It's a four-week program that provides general construction industry-related training. Once they come out of training, they have OSHA 10, OSHA 30 training or certificates, and they also learn blueprint reading and just basic general construction industry. and they also learn blueprint reading and just basic general construction industry education. The second training arm is the Tarrant County College Program, which you all are involved in. This program really just was the effort or the result of the efforts of the college and Dr. Shannon Iguadilla, I probably said that wrong, but Susan Allenese helped make this connection with us, and Dr. Shannon and her team basically just came up with a innovative curriculum to help these program participants, and I'll be happy to share with you the information in just one moment, the successes that we've had. Next slide, please. A quick timeline of the program, people come in to us, they do orientation, we find out what their needs are, the areas that they're interested in, and from there, we'll direct them to which program would best fit their needs. With Tarrant County College, we're talking about a heavy equipment operator program. After training, they go into the employment phase of the program, and that's where we place them on jobs. And it's very important that we have industry partners within the RBCA that buy into this vision. Archer Western is one of our industry partners who came in and spoke with the students during the eight-week training program, and after completion, they are now working for Archer Western on the DART Silverline Project. Next slide. Another important factor that we want to take note of in our program is the pay rate. A lot of people that come to us that have a background, their former wages were $8, $9 an hour, and it's just simply not enough to take care of their families. And so, we make sure that the industry partners and the members that hire these employees make livable wages, anywhere from 13 to sometimes up to 20-something dollars an hour, just depending on the skill trade. With our heavy equipment operators, I'm glad to know that they'll be making above the $20 an hour range. Next slide, please. So transforming communities is another pillar that we stand on. Obviously, you've heard about the Second Chance Hiring Program, so to the left, you'll see individuals on a job site. Top right is our chairman with council member Casey Thomas in Dallas and Board Chair of Homeward Bound Doug Denton. We also believe in getting people from rehabilitation clinics and making sure that they have an opportunity for workforce development as well, and so we partner with rehabilitation, drug rehabilitation industries. The bottom right is a picture of one of our home repair recipients. We fixed her roof, and she was very, very happy, and that's the next thing I'll talk to you about is our Senior Home Repair Program. Next slide, thank you. The home revitalization program for senior citizens helps those who are over the age of 65. Usually, they are disadvantaged homeowners who cannot afford to, you know, handle the deferred maintenance on their homes. They just need help, and so we'll step in and provide them with assistance at no cost to them, and our members are the ones who make those repairs possible. And just so you understand the cyclical approach, for instance, you noticed your 11 Jock contract recipients, so one of those I did notice is an RBCA member Postel Group. Postel Group is someone who hires people from the ex-offender program, and he trains people how to paint, how to put in drywall, how to lay down flooring, and he's teaching them skilled trades. He's also helping with our Senior Home Repair Program, and so when people in the Fort Worth community need help, Postel Group is one of those people that will mobilize and make those repairs at no charge. But he's able to do that because of the contracts that he gets awarded through agencies such as TCC. Next slide. Our scholarship program is also another very proud program. We help high school seniors who are also in historically underutilized communities. They're either going to trade schools or four-year institutions that focus on construction, STEM, any of those, engineering, math, any construction-related industry, two-years, you know, two-year schools, four-year schools, and we realize that, again, there's a gap in workforce for the construction industry, so we're helping to fill those gaps with scholarship opportunities for our students. Next slide, please. We are committed to capacity building, team building, workforce development, and community involvement. The Regional Black Contractors Association, again, we've been around for about five years now, going on six years, so you could say that we're new. However, we've made so much impact in these last five years in growing companies. We've had members that started with us who could not bond, you know, more than $1 million, and now they are bonding $10, $15 million because of the support and advocacy of the Regional Black Contractors Association. I'd also like to thank TCC's Minority Business Department and Andre McEwing for all of his support and leadership. Susan, your leadership, making sure that awareness to having diverse contracts is always a priority. Next slide, please. Really quickly, we have a small but mighty team, our chairman John Proctor, myself, Pam Davis, our Workforce Development Manager, Ralph Adams, our Workforce Director, Brené Proctor, our Marketing Communications Coordinator, Denise Soria, our Accountant, and Soria Trail, our Administrative Assistant. Next slide, please. We're on all social media platforms if you'd like to connect with us. BlackContractors.org is the best way to reach us. Next slide, please. And we just, again, thank TCC. This year, we had awards, every year we do awards, this year was a little different, but we would like to honor TCC and give TCC the Community Conscious Award, and I have that award here. I don't know who wants to receive this award, but this award is presented to those who are advocates of the community, helping others help themselves through supportive measures. TCC designed an innovative curriculum that addressed gaps in skills development throughout underserved communities, and I would like to give you all recognition for that.
Thank you so much.
You're so welcome. Thank you. You're so welcome. Yeah. Okay. You're welcome. All right, so if there are any questions, I would be happy to address them at this time.
Do you have any statistics on the recidivism? You know, how well is that Second Chance Program working to keep people back, you know, out of prison and going, you know, those kind of things?
So I will be honest with you, we just downloaded and got a new software, right? That comes with the evolution. I can tell you that we have a 90% job placement rate, and after 180 days of employment, 72% of our participants are still gainfully employed, and we did just, like I said, we downloaded new software to get us more sophisticated with our numbers, so I can get that information for you when I get it.
And you may be aware that the Pell, our National Organization Act is, we consistently support the use of Pell Grants or the expansion of Pell Grants into the Second Chance Program to help out in this regard, so that some of the folks you deal with actually have some grants that they can use to get skills training and education.
Yes, and we're very, very thankful and fortunate for that. We have received money from different, you know, state and federal funds to make sure that our students, our program participants are able to go to school and get training for no charge. That was our biggest barrier when we started working with this program, is how are they going to pay for the education? And TCC has been a huge champion to make sure that those resources were tapped into, and we were able to utilize those, so our students are able to, or your students, our program participants are able to go to class and receive this certification at no charge.
And in the same regard, we're encouraging the use of Pell Grants for short-term certificate programs as well, which will help all those folks.
Yes, that was, the major barrier dealing with formerly incarcerated is that there are so many obstacles that they face when they come home, and so they don't have the, I guess it's time is of the essence, so you're not able to just be without unemployment for six months or a year to go through the school, and so TCC was very helpful in designing a short-term curriculum, a short course for eight weeks for this heavy equipment operator program. And we're looking, we're partnering with Dion Baxby and other members of the college to help us design more short courses that will fill this gap that we have in construction.
The Chancellor always talks about the fact that if we could take, if we could just help one person, you know, not to slip into the, back into the bad habits and those kinds of things, it's worth every dollar we put into the program.
Yep.
It's tremendous. So, any other comments, questions? I'd like to thank you for that award. I pledge that we will continue to try to earn the award again. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, thank you for having me, everyone.
Kimberly, thank you very much for coming. Also, it should be noted, Kim does sit on our Everyday Entrepreneur Venture Fund Programming Funding Committee, and so we greatly appreciate that, to her offers her expertise and her time in which to help garner resources for our entrepreneurial program. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to thank the college for that as well, because, you know, again, it's just another outlet for young people who are coming out of TCC to showcase their talent, and it gives them the confidence they need when you have a support system behind you like that, and it was, it's been very rewarding to sit on that board, so thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next briefing is entitled "Designing the Student-Centric Learning Experience", and to give some context, we have both Dr. Zarina Blankenbaker and Dr. Sean Madison with us today. Both of them serve as champions in the two principles that are foremost related to learning, and Zarina doing the ILE Integrated Learning Principle and Sean the Learning Commons, and we often refer to those as the learning inside the classroom and the learning outside the classroom. And as I mentioned before, as time has gone on, that work has matured, the ideation of these activities is coming to a point of convergence, and as that convergence happens, we're going to see much more synergy, if you will, and the activity that's happened that's taken place into the form of implementation. And so today, Zarina and Sean are here to talk a little bit about the student-centric learning experience as that has converged. So, Sean, Zarina?
All right, thank you, Chancellor Jovanini. President Heed and members of the Board of Trustees, hello again. I am Zarina Blankenbaker, President of Northwest Campus and the proud champion of the Integrated Instructional Learning Environments or the ILE Principle.
And I'm Sean Madison, President of Trinity River Campus and Champion of the Learning Commons Principle. Both Zarina and I are here to share with you our TCC journey to reimagine learning for our students through the collaboration of work of each of our principles.
Since January of 2018, our principles have been jointly focused on the extension of preparing and transforming learning both inside and outside the classroom. We have actually used a design-thinking paradigm with empathy guiding our perspective of how to further improve what TCC is doing from the lens of the student.
And this understanding has been shaped by various forms of engagement, to include our dynamic faculty, staff, students, and many of our community partners. By doing so, this ecosystem of engagement is helping us to create, if not design, this student-centric learning experience at Tarrant County College. So, in today's brief presentation, Zarina and I will spotlight how the 3GAP work has afforded us the opportunity to optimize various forms of engagement and planning to sustain a student-centric experience with focus on learning. We will also focus on key design elements that have framed our approaches to learning and the delivery of instruction. Afterwards, we will share some recent developments and current activities specifically in the areas of organizational learning, learning spaces, and technology that is helping us to expand both our capacity and capability to advance TCC's approach to learning. Additionally, we will discuss how we are further realizing this work as the implementation of our principal work becomes more mutually reinforcing and not focused on one principle. In other words, how the work is beginning to converge.
To explore learning and academic learning support, we have centered on answering the questions, how can we at Tarrant County College focus on learning beyond the content of a particular subject? How can we support student achievement of the skills which employers desire as an extension of engaged student learning? The first thing our Tarrant County College faculty did was to define for ourselves what the learning framework should be at Tarrant County College. When we began this work, it was obvious that learning for the 21st century student was core to this evolution. Although the college has always been student-focused over the 51 years we've been in existence, we have now intentionally placed students at the center of our instructional design. Research and findings demonstrate that students must actively participate and be involved in their own learning process for meaningful and lasting learning to take place. Our own faculty cited research that integrative learning increases student engagement and retention of knowledge. They told us that students are not as engaged in traditional classrooms and are not retaining as much knowledge as they could be in an environment that was designed to promote integrative learning. Formal and informal learning environments, they said, should be designed to accommodate and facilitate integrative learning, and this environment has many advantages and promote the benefits of the nature of learning we want at Tarrant County College. And so, to create a continuum of learning, this requires a framework for design elements to support the convergence of learning in the classroom, which should be reinforced outside the classroom.
So throughout this journey, our respective teams have leveraged the power of strategic frameworks to shape not only how we communicate about learning to both internal and external audiences, but also how we approach our principal planning activities to realize our overall 3GAP imperative. For ILE and Learning Commons, we use complementary frameworks to drive our respective planning processes. The core of student learning resides in the convergence of pedagogy, technology, and space, and ILE alongside faculty has centered these three pillars within strategic conversations about ways to better support learners within the classroom. Moreover, these pillars have helped ILE to design and curate recommendations that in that equip faculty and staff with the tools and the knowledge they need to create engaged learning experiences, and you will hear more about this later on in the presentation. To better support learners outside the classroom, in places such as academic learning labs and libraries, the Learning Commons created an overarching service model known as CLEVER that describes how TCC's academic support professionals interact with students in terms of core attributes or features that a student or a faculty user should be able to associate with any Learning Commons that she or he visits at TCC, the acronym stands for Collaborative, Learner-Centered, Engaging, Virtual and Flexible, Encouraging and Responsive, for example, in practice with focus on the L or learner-centered, the idea is that the learning lab professional or librarians are intentional about collaborating to design academic support activities or services tailored to meet a variety of student needs, from offering consistent approaches to tutorial assistance, to ensuring equitable access to technology that promotes digital agency, Learning Commons Services draws on ILE's work in engaged learning to maximize and reinforce learning outside the classroom.
Integrative learning encompasses learning both within the formal classroom, in curricula outcomes, and experiences with service learning, practicums, internships, apprenticeships, and co-curricula learning experiences outside of the classroom, integrative learning extends to academic support in the Learning Commons, and also extracurricular activities such as student organizations and participation in planned campus activities and mentoring opportunities, the learning activities that we want to expose our students to include engaged learning, project-based learning, work-based learning, immersive learning, learning communities, the use of e-portfolios to document learning, supplemental instruction, academic tutoring in the Learning Commons, to name just a few, in spaces designed for greater collaboration with technology to optimize learning, all in an effort to make sure that students connect what it is that they're learning to how they can apply what they learn, so at the core, we really seek to cultivate the specific skills of the whole student, which we know employers desire, critical thinking, reasoning, communication, personal and social responsibility, teamwork, and technology, we are truly helping students cultivate knowledge, skills, and abilities to prepare them for the jobs of the future.
So Zarina and I hope that we provided a foundational understanding of the way various teams, primarily faculty, have operationalized the definition of learning at TCC, also known as integrative learning, at this point in the presentation, we will provide some examples of how the college has expanded its capacity and capability to support integrative learning across the college based on the collaborative work of ILE and Learning Commons, within this context, capacity building refers to the time and resources that the college has dedicated to this learning approach to produce world-ready students, we have learned that too often the pace and scope of any type of change can outpace an organization's ability to absorb it, so we have been intentional about forging strategies to address it, by capability building, we know that as an organization, we may have the capacity to change, but it is critical that we build key capabilities and knowledge within TCC to sustain these efforts in three key areas, organizational learning, learning spaces, and technology. Not only have we championed our respective principles, we've also championed organizational learning by scaling our colleges' knowledge and a shared language around the 3GAP work on integrative learning, for example, ILE launched the Engaged Learning Institute, or ELI, in 2020, following the prototype of the Active Learning Academy in 2019, the ELI was developed by faculty for faculty as professional development to improve student learning, utilizing the neuroscience of learning and relevant space and technology, to date, a quarter of the full-time faculty have graduated from ALA or ELI with more in the pipeline, as a result of participation, they are better prepared to leverage new learning spaces and technology to drive engaged pedagogies in the development of world-ready students through integrative learning, notably, participants reported deeper awareness of ways to make their teaching more accessible to students, to extend learning beyond the classroom, in January, the college also extended the institute to include adjunct and embedded faculty, and there is quite a bit of excitement about our next steps. The Engaged Learning Institute also raised the possibility of integrating active learning methods in the classroom with pedagogy within Learning Commons, the CLEVER service model and the Learning Commons service delivery model naturally complement active and engaged learning, which positively reinforces the idea that students in the Learning Commons are not passively receiving information or services, their engagement with and ownership of learning are built into every aspect of the service delivery model, another opportunity for ILE Learning Commons engagement was the recent Virtual Summer Institute, a partnership not only between two principals, but also with the Center for Teaching and Learning.
We determined early on that it is our approach to learning that should influence the spaces we design and the kind of technology we select, so to create the appropriate environment, principal teams researched, benchmarked, and conducted site visits, and then came together to identify the various student learning space features through multiple work sessions, these components ranging from flexible movable furniture, no classroom hierarchy, or front of the room, use of functional wall space, mobile light turns, and easily accessible technology are some of the features we learned can help create an environment to support integrative learning, we then developed a process to integrate as many of these features in our formal learning environments as possible when we renovate classrooms or design new classrooms, including computerized rooms and specialized technical classrooms, of course, as the funding becomes available and is approved by our board, this is also the approach we are utilizing in designing the Learning Commons for greater flexibility, to promote engagement, and to create an environment for increased collaboration and participation. So, learning spaces inside and outside the classroom are right now being designed to support the learning facilitators and their need to focus, to collaborate, and to learn, not only in support of students, but also of each other, no single type of space can effectively support the diverse needs of individuals and groups, yet, we are designing an ecosystem of interconnected learning hubs that are destinations where students have flexible options to support their learning, these intentionally designed spaces extend engagement from curricula to co- and extracurricular student engagement so that they can be used in a flexible way for mutually exclusive purposes, these spaces allow us to create learning communities where faculty are creating content, subject matter communities, and students collaborate as communities of learners. Our faculty and staff are quite passionate about how we should be using technology, from a strategic standpoint, we identify technology components, desire to facilitate engaged learning, from an operations standpoint, technology in the learning environment should be integrated in such a way that it supports accessibility and then ease of use, it should provide an option for reliable centralized connectivity, hidden and stored when not in use with easy access when needed, we want the consistent use of technology and for technology to follow a student to best meet their needs, we are selecting technologies to better identify student learning trends and student needs, all to better support and serve our students.
So as we work together to advance the student-centric learning experience, we use the term student-centric to simply mean that the key outcome of our work is this experience driven by our intentions to address the distinct learning needs, interests, and aspirations of our students, and we have designed and are starting to implement several recommendations, operational efficiencies, approaches, and academic support strategies that converge to positively impact learning.
Our teams have included an influential and enthusiastic mix of thought leaders and faculty experts from across Tarrant County College who are dedicated to putting new strategies and new ways of thinking into effect, and committed to transforming Tarrant County College, we have presented only a glimpse of the ways in which 3G, the 3GAP network of activities have fostered teamwork, team success, and a shared language that will guide our work toward creating natural areas of convergences, as we make progress, we will continue to work together to generate new possibilities for Tarrant County College learners, thank you for your attention, and Dr. Jovanini, this concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much, both of you, appreciate it, are there any questions or comments? Any of the board members like to observe?
I'd like to ask you a couple of quick questions, I'm not an educator, but I really can see in what you're presenting here, this can really make a difference, it would seem to me, in effectiveness of the educational process that we have here at TCC, I'd be curious about two things, one is the acceptance and the faculty, the embracing of these changes, this is change, and a lot of people resist change, and I'm sure that is a challenge, how do you measure the effectiveness of the implementation of this from the faculty side, and the other thing I would ask is, from the student's side, how do we measure what's working and what's better, what's not working from the student's standpoint, I'm really looking at it from, I guess, more of a business person's standpoint than an educator's standpoint, what are the results, is what I'm saying?
So, part of the beauty of the process is that we are engaging faculty throughout all of our conversations, so our faculty are at the forefront of any and all of the changes that they, that we are currently making and implementing, and so therefore, right now, we're experiencing very little resistance from faculty of everything that we, Sean and I have shared with you, as far as effectiveness, we are constantly checking the pulse of our faculty through administering surveys, and in conducting focus groups with our faculty and with our Learning Commons staff, so we are asking them about their feedback, integrating their feedback, and making sure that the next iteration of what we do is an improvement based on what they tell us, so that is how we're gauging the effectiveness from the faculty perspective, from the student perspective, what we're wanting to do is make an aggregated impact, right, on our student engagement, which will then lead to greater student retention and student completion, and so that is how we are hoping, and we are continuing to measure based on key performance indicators of student success.
And I think it's also important to note, from the student perspective, that we have intentionally built in student engagement sessions throughout the planning process, and within those sessions, students have articulated the kinds of experiences, the kinds of spaces that they are looking for that support their learning, so we're not doing this without the student voice and perspective in mind, with respect to staff, and many of the Learning Commons individuals are TCC staff members who work very collaboratively with faculty, one of the things that we've been intentional about is creating space for them to get familiar with the service model, but also to ask questions, to kind of learn from each other, in one instance, one of the things that we're finding is that, you know, there were individuals at various campuses who had never met each other, and even as part of, you know, as we create more space for individuals to interact and engage, they're learning from each other, so we're creating spaces for that, we mentioned institutes, professional development, we've had benchmarking sessions, or what have you, so by now, because of the opportunities that we've created to engage, especially with things that have already been in place, like the Learning Symposium, or what have you, folks are very familiar with the work, and have been a part of the work as well, and have been vocal about ideas to help shape the work moving forward.
Thank you. I think we can recognize the tremendous amount of work that's gone on through many years to get to this point, and I can see this being installed in our new buildings under our bond program, but in the redesign, how are we going to handle the redesign of existing facilities, how do you decide where to start, and how long is all that going to take, I know, understand this is a process.
So for classrooms, we've already begun that process, and we have developed a classification of of the inventory of all of our over 500 classrooms. And we are right now following a schedule of about 50 classrooms per year to be renovated based on the classifications, from basic all the way to classrooms that have all of the technology integrated for the optimal experience, depending on the current state of that particular classroom. So it is in, of course, full partnership with real estate and facilities. And Susan Alanese's team has been at the forefront of implementing the design components that were recommended and then approved by the cabinet and then subsequently approved by the board for renovations. So that is already in progress.
And the one thing I'll add is, so you'll receive an update for the five-year capital plan in August that will reflect that entire five-year schedule of classroom renovations across all of the campuses. In addition, the physical attributes of the Learning Commons that you just heard described as well will be part of the delivery of the principal bucket of the bond program. And we're in the process of fine-tuning that list right now and developing scope and feasibility of different types of improvements. Northwest is going to end up being sort of the flagship, and Dr. Madison is heavily involved in what that ultimate design looks like. And then we'll have to determine, within the context of other buildings that won't be completely rebuilt, what we can accomplish and how far the money will go. That same principle carries over to all other kinds of student services, our onboarding and advising and all of that. So the board will have an opportunity in August, when we come back with that five-year capital plan, to get a real look at that finite list of what's included and what's excluded. That's part of what Jacobs has been working actively on with us at this moment.
And this whole process is to improve student learning. How are we going to measure the success of this program in terms of KPIs or any other management statistics that we might be generating? In other words, we're spending a lot of time and effort in doing everything we know to do to improve our student learning experience. But how are we going to measure that in terms of student success?
Sure. I'll defer to Dr. Blankenbaker and the metrics that she was describing about how we look at student completion and student progress as part of our ongoing effort, but she may want to elaborate on that.
Sure. Our college already has a mechanism, and it is a requirement by our Texas Education Coordinating Board and our Regional Accreditation Agency. And those are common key performance indicators, retention, completion, and of course, job placement. And by all accounts, those indicators are achieving a positive trajectory. And so we know that there is, although we are not measuring it through an experimental design, we do know that it is making a difference because we are watching those indicators on a regular basis.
Are there any specific goals in mind? In terms of achievement of improvement?
Improvement, yes. Improvement year over year.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
Mr. He, this is Teresa. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Greenhill. Okay. Oh, just wanted to compliment you both. And I'm sure this has been hundreds of hours, if not thousands of hours of collaboration on everyone involved. And I just wanted to thank you all for all the efforts. I'm looking forward to seeing all of this come to fruition. I think it's going to be evolving constantly. And I'm just, it's going to be such a game changer for everything that we're doing here at the college. And I just want to thank the chancellor too for setting this, establishing this culture. And, you know, with all this collaboration, it just seems as though we're slowly becoming that one college that was established as this goal. So thank you again, and congratulations to everyone involved.
Mr. Chair, my observation is also that the funding formula for our college and other colleges also has to do a lot with success points. And I'm sure that the school is looking at those success points.
Thank you, Chancellor.
Good. Zarina, Sean, thank you very much. Appreciate it. A lot of good work. I do want to remind the board as well, with all this work, not just these two principles, but with all the eight principles, that the work's being done by the employees. They're the ones that are on the panels. So if it's related to learning, it's faculty. If it's related to student services, it's the student services staff. So it's intently designed such that there is automatic, you know, understanding buying. If you want to be involved, you're involved. And so that has gone a long, long way as it relates to all of this work and not just in these two principles to ensure that it is moving forward without little resistance, if you will. Also, the relationship to the KPIs and things that were asked, you know, the recent accolades, the last few months that we received as the best college in, you know, business, online, technology programs, those are KPIs, and those are things that we'll continue to measure, not only against ourselves year to year, but I like, I think the real value is how we do it in relationship to our peers. And so when we're, you know, pretty regularly receiving national accolades for, in essence, we're receiving those based upon KPIs, measuring us against other colleges is a real feather in the cap for the institution. And so the desire, obviously, is to continue to enhance and improve those KPIs. And we believe these initiatives are both from a facility standpoint, a faculty-staff development standpoint, and programmatic standpoint to stay current and to continue to succeed at even greater levels. So thank you, Zarina and Sean, very much. The next briefing we have is from our chief, Sean Williams, who will talk a little bit about our racial profiling report. Sean?
Good evening. President He, Chancellor Giavonini, members of the board. In 2011, House Bill 3389 required each law enforcement agency that routinely conducts traffic stops as part of their duties to compile information on public contacts that are made and present that information to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement and to the governing body of their police agency. Texas law defines racial profiling as "a law enforcement initiated action based on the individual's race, ethnicity, or national origin, rather than on the individual's behavior or on information identifying the individual as having been engaged in any type of criminal activity." The report you've received in your package meets the informational requirements that our agency is obligated to collect, report, and present to you for your information, and shows that the Tarrant County College District Police Department is in full compliance with the Texas racial profiling law. So do we have any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Sean. As we have indicated previously, as part of the bond program, the board will receive a quarterly bond program update. And we have that today from Aaron Safar, from Jacobs. Aaron?
Good afternoon, trustees. Mr. President, Mr. Chancellor, excited to be back. We have, since we last spoke, have made a lot of progress in implementing the bond program. We're excited to present this update. Two sort of housekeeping notes in terms of how we plan to do it. We plan on giving quarterly updates in this format as a presentation, but monthly providing the report that's in your packet. So we'll provide an executive summary, a financial analysis. All of that same content in a different format is always available online, and we'll take a look at the website here in a second. But in terms of these presentations, we plan on making them quarterly. The other thing that I would suggest is, this is our first iteration of this type of presentation. And so we want to make sure this is for your benefit and the public's benefit. So if you have any comments on the content or quality of the presentation or the presenter, please let us know, and we'll make those adjustments for the future. So these are the big topics we'll cover. Financial summary, we'll give some program-wide updates. We'll talk about the website. And the monthly reports that are in your packet, we'll go over those in a little bit of detail. And then what do we foresee in the near future? So very quickly, financial summary. And these are snapshots that we took from the dashboard that's on the website. So again, what we report here is going to be the same that we're reporting to the public. You've got the four bond buckets that are there, the Northwest Campus Bucket, the Southeast Campus Bucket, the 3G AP, which ties really well to the conversation we just had two presentations ago, and then the MEP Infrastructure Bucket. One note that when you're looking at the reports, you may see the total is $837 million. The bond is $825 million. But we're also incorporating $12 million in additional funding relative to the Northwest Campus Early College High School program. So when you look at the total, that's how we get to the 837. We've also broken it out by campus. There are two notes in there. The district-wide, it covers sort of programmatic-wide efforts. And then the Northwest Alliance is a subset of the Northwest Campus, but we've broken that out for reporting purposes. So that sets our baseline where we're at with the bond program. Now, where we are on the status, we've actually made a lot of progress in this program. To date, there's 110 projects that are currently formulated. And I'll talk a little bit about how we're proceeding with the remainder of those projects. But 47 of those are either enclosed or completed. So those are primarily MEP projects that have been implemented by RNF prior to our arrival. 27 are currently in construction for a bidding, and we've got 29 in some phase of planning or design, which includes the Northwest Campus and the Southeast Campus projects. Importantly, we've committed almost $130 million of the 837 in contracts. You know, Huckabee Gensler, Perkins &amp; Will, Jacobs, and many, many other service providers to date have been contracted out. Of that, $60 million has actually been spent to date. So we're about 7% complete of the $837 million. And you can see how that breaks out by campus individually. And so, yeah, I won't repeat numbers necessarily, but that's where we're at most of the spending. Like I said, to date, relative to commitments is on the MEP project. You can see $43 million in commitment and $30-some-one million has been spent to date. So that's where we're sort of the most complete of the current projects to date. Now, on the Northwest Campus project, so we'll talk, sorry, program updates. This section is to talk about the individual buckets and where we see some of that progress. So I'll start with the Northwest Campus. We've given several presentations. Huckabee Gensler's given several presentations on the status of that project. So rather than rehashing the individual design elements, we'll give status on progress, where we're at. As part of the GMP-1 scope of work that was previously approved by the board, we have completed the demolition, the above-ground demolition of the WADM building. And we'll show some pictures in a video here of that in a second. And also the NOC, which is where all of the network operations comes into the building. We've topped out that. And so these are critical components to the development of the big buildings that are going to be coming onto the campus in short order. GMP-1 also includes the sanitary sewer installation of the utility corridor, which is a major component that facilitates the construction of the new buildings. GMP-2, which has also been approved by the board, we've issued the notice to proceed. That was correct, right? We've issued the notice to proceed. We're buying out the subcontracts, or SCANS is buying out the subcontracts at the moment. We're also working on the building permit. And one major component of that was that there was some student artwork that needed to be salvaged and relocated. So that has been relocated as well. GMP-3, that one is in progress, and we plan on presenting that to the board ideally in June. I went to the market for bidding today. There's actually an outreach event scheduled for the 16th to encourage participation. And we're participating with all of our agencies and organizations to try to make that as widely spread as possible. And GMP-3 will encapsulate buildings one and two of the new building construction. And then GMP-4, which we expect to come later in the summer, will conclude all of the GMP processes and proposals that we expect. And that'll be what is known as Phase II-B, buildings three and four and the completion of that. So a lot of progress, a lot of individual components are moving, but we are making progress. So let me show just some quick progress photos. The winter storm of 2021 slowed us down from demolishing that building a couple of days, but didn't stop it because now it is down. The top right picture is of that Network Operations Center, the NOC Building, or the NOC Edition, being constructed. Come around clockwise, bottom right, middle right, that's that WADM building. But I'll show, it is no longer there. And then, like I mentioned, a key component of the sewer utility corridor in that bottom left picture. So now, we'll switch, please, to a little video. See there? It gets exciting in about 20 seconds. But there's a mega jackhammer taking down a column, and you've got some dust control measures going on with the water hose. Could put some music, I guess, to it. And there it is, safely demolished. And they've completed the other half of that. But I do encourage you also, on the website, on the Northwest Campus page, we do have live webcams of the construction site. So anytime you want to log in and check out, that is available through the website as well. So a little change of pace. Back to the presentation. We'll talk now Southeast Campus. We have conducted the schematic design workshop number two with Perkins &amp; Will. We've also met with the chancellor to review the progress of the design. We do, we are in the middle of procuring the construction manager at risk. So as with Northwest Campus, SCANS does the C-MAR. We are procuring that. That bid's closed March 2nd, week and a half ago or so. 13 bids were submitted, so that's really encouraging. That's really, really good participation. We had really good coverage. And so those are being evaluated, and we expect a recommendation for that C-MAR in the coming months to this board so we can get a contract and get them engaged during schematic design. Likewise, we'll be coming back for a schematic design presentation in short order as well. I believe that might be scheduled for May. Now, the MEP infrastructure and 3G AP are following similar tracks. So we know we've made a lot of progress with the MEP projects to date, and there's a lot of great detail in those, and those are being implemented. But one of the things that we identified when we came in was that there is some overlap of MEP projects and those 3G AP projects, which are renovations. And one of the things that we want to avoid, almost at all costs, is coming in and replacing an air handler or upgrading some sort of system. And then three years later down the road, we had a plan to renovate the whole thing. We want to be able to take advantage and optimize those projects. So we've engaged in what we're calling a mini master plan with some of our team members and the TCC organization to align those and develop a strategic plan. I think Susan alluded to it earlier, that gives us an implementation schedule for both the 3G AP renovations, improvements, additions, as well as coordinated with the MEP so that we're not coming to this board four years down the road or five years down the road and saying, "Yeah, we spent a lot of money and tore it out a couple of years later and did it again." So we want to avoid that. We want to be really good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. We want to be really good stewards of, of, of the taxpayers' dollars. So we're engaged in that process. That process is nearly complete and we hope to have a comprehensive list and a comprehensive strategy next month to be able to, to begin that implementation. So most of what we've spent this month recently doing is getting, getting dollars reconciled, budgets implemented, our project control system up to date so that we can really have that management ability over the, over the MEP infrastructure program. In similar vein, we've done that with the three GAP program. One of the other things that we did last month was we met with Huckabee Gensler. Again, Northwest Campus is going to be sort of this flagship for what the three GAP should be. And so we took a download, really a deep dive into all of the things that they've learned over the last two and a half years and documented that. We're also working with RNF and TCC as a whole to make sure that all of the great work that was just presented in terms of the three GAP is documented in a set of design standards that we can give to architects and have a consistent appeal and a consistent approach because, you know, as we're trying to spread work around to various firms, we want to make sure that they have a consistent standard from which to, to be guided. And so we're working hard on that with TCC to make sure that that is presented. So now we'll jump into the website update. The website is live. You can navigate it to it by tccd.edu/bond. I encourage you, please go on there. There's a lot of great information. The, the dashboard is up and functional and, and lots of, lots of great announcements that are on there. So just to recap, when you land on the, on the homepage, you'll see upcoming announcements or recent events, things like that. You'll also see individual projects and one of the things that's important here, as well as in the written report, is these individual project pages are going to be limited only to those projects with a budget over a million dollars. At the end of the day, we might have close to 200 and some odd projects and we want to make sure that we give you great information. And so, you know, the $500,000 project or the $30,000 this project or whatever, we're, we're going to report on it in the finances and the schedule and the dashboard, but we're going to focus and limit our attention to the detailed project pages for those that have a budget of over, over a million dollars. So that is what's reflected currently on the website. I think that's about 26 projects or so. And then we have the dashboard as well. You can see, one of the things that we're going to do is make sure that the numbers always align with what we present to the board as well as what's represented there. But it's, it's an extremely interactive tool. You want to filter out by three GAP. I want to see all the three GAP projects that are completed. Well, you click three GAP and you click the status is completed and you'll get the information about what those are and you can drill down, you can see what campuses they're on. It really is a great tool and like I've mentioned before, previous clients that I've worked with, the, the board of trustees is typically the, the biggest users of that because it really provides a lot of insight and intel into things that, that you may have particular passions about. And so I would recommend, rather than diving into the website, I think we'll, we'll, we'll reserve that for a different time unless we want to do a, a live demo of the website. And then in, in your packets, we've got the individual monthly reports. We have an executive summary. We do spend a great amount of time trying to make it as concise, but as relevant as possible to what is going on in that project. So you have that at the ready. We will provide that on a monthly basis. We'll also provide a financial snapshot by project across the, the various categories of information. So you can see where we're at with, with budget, with commitments, any pending change orders that may be coming, where we're at with future expenditures, as well as what's been spent to date. So we're, we're providing true transparency into where every dollar of that bond program is being spent. So you can see that. And then also similar to the information that's on the website, we'll have static snapshots of individual projects, again, limited to those with a budget of over a million dollars, where you can see more details such as details on the schedule, details on progress, as well as maybe some of the key individuals or some of the scope statements that are, that are around that project. And then lastly, we'll conclude with program look ahead. So what can you expect in the coming months with the Northwest Campus? As I, as I mentioned, we're, we're in the process of bidding out GMP2 and we're also in the process of preparing GMP3. That should be coming to the board in short order. We're also continuing the construction of the utility corridor, the Northwest Campus, and continuing that through, throughout. And then key, key date for the board is trying to hit a GMP3 approval for June and GMP4 approval later at the end of the summer. So design continues on buildings one and two, buildings three and four in various stages to, to getting those ready. Southeast Campus, we plan on, on getting final approval on schematic design in the coming month and then making a schematic design presentation briefing to, to, to the board as to, as to the status. So that is, that is continuing and like we mentioned, we'll bring a C Mar selection to the board as well in the coming months. And then with the MEP and three GAP both, we're going to continue and conclude hopefully the, the mini master planning effort this month. We'll prepare it, finalize it and package it and then we'll prepare a scoping that will help with, with what Susan alluded to in terms of the, the five-year capital plan that, that, that's part and parcel of that, of that plan. And so that's informing that we're having those discussions right now. So similarly with three GAP, one of the other things that we're working on is developing a comprehensive and robust activation process, which means, you know, when the project is turned over from construction, we reach substantial completion, how do we, how do we optimize and how, how do we act as efficiently as possible to mobilize furniture, get staff trained on the building and occupy it as quickly as possible without any hiccups? And that's one of the things that we're taking advantage of right now to make sure we have in place. And then our favorite topic, smart buildings and digital roadmap. We are in the process of, Intelligent Buildings has been engaged and they are having regular meetings and there's a regular cadence on, on those meetings. We expect a status report on their progress next month with a presentation report out to the board in May of, of their progress. They really are making great strides and they've interviewed a ton of people and, and are really working also with the Northwest Campus to see what we can do specifically there as well to integrate these technologies. So exciting work and I hope the, the product meets the, the desires of the board when, when we get there. And I think that's it. Entertain any questions or comments?
Would you go over that again?
Absolutely. All right. We'll start back.
Questions, comments, suggestions?
Oh, y'all can't let me off that easy today.
Good report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron. Our last briefing is, will be given a guest, Jack Thompson from the city of Crowley to...
Mr. He, this is Teresa.
Yes, Teresa.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I just had a quick question. If, if you could show us where on the, on the website where it shows the number of viewers or the viewership?
So I don't have those statistics with me. Those are not, those are not made public on the website, but we can certainly get, get that information. It is managed.
I'm sorry, I was going to add one thing. That's a great question. And then Reg and his team have been working on a communication plan for this that'll push it out through social media and so on because all of this should be interest, of interest to students, to our employees, to the community. And so, but to your point, Ms. Ayala, we will definitely be tracking what that usage looks like before and after. So that, that whole social media effort has not been launched as of yet.
Okay. All right. We have a project and financing plan amendment and extension for a TERS in District One in Crowley, in the city of Crowley and Jack Thompson's here to chat about that with you.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, trustees, chancellor. My name is Jack Thompson. I'm the Assistant City Manager for the city of Crowley and I will be talking to you today about the Crowley Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone number one, the progress of it and where we are currently headed. So with that, so the original need for the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone was, was city-initiated and it was to help us to turn around some blighted areas of our city, to help us bring infrastructure to parts of town that needed improvements and to attract eventual development, both on the residential, commercial and mixed-use opportunities within the city. And so as time, well, let's go through the timeline real quick. So beginning in September of 2013, the city council adopted the ordinance designating certain real property in the city for the TERS. And December of 2018, the city of Crowley adopted an ordinance enlarging the TERS and extending the duration of the TERS. But they also at that same date went ahead and adopted the city ordinance approving the final project and reinvestment zone financing plan. And then on October of 2019, the Tarrant County signed the agreement to the updated TERS plan. And so here's a picture of the zone and one of the things that we did, you'll see a, a red outlined area underneath the, the block of the, of the blue outline. So we did add 72 acres to the TERS and so that is what that area is, that additional 72 acres. So with the final project and reinvestment zone, what we did was we extended the life of the TERS to the year 2052, extending it from the year 2038. We expanded the boundaries to include additional 72 acres. We updated the cost to allow for infrastructure and improvements associated with the Caris development and we also reduced city participation from 100% to 90%. The reason behind this change was the Caris development. So we were approached in about 2016, I believe it was, 17, by the Nehemiah Company about the prospects of doing a 600-acre, 2,000-home subdivision in the north part of the city. And so initially, the TERS was city-initiated. We did not have a developer in, in tow at the time. So we wanted to initiate this to have the funds and the ability to improve infrastructure and to frankly make our city more attractive for redevelopment and new development. Well, when Caris came online and approached us about this project, that changed things to make it more of a developer-initiated type project. And so they had a definitive plan for how and when they wanted to build out the subdivision and that added a lot more clarity to our project and the fact that it gives us some, a better understanding of where our revenues are going to come from and what those revenues are going to look like. So as far as the TERS program goes, what TERS development includes is over 2,000 homes on 600 acres. It has approximately 95 acres of parkland and a lot of the improvements that would need to be made to this site, as it is undeveloped, would be roads, water and sewer lines, landscaping and open space improvements. So this is a unique opportunity for us. We've not had a developer to date that has come into Crowley with such an ambitious plan. Their park system and trail system is very aggressive for us and for Crowley and it was something that the city council was very excited about. The, the house products that will be offered is a wide range, starting around 250 and moving on up. And the types of product, the types of housing is very broad and appeals to a lot of different people. And so from our perspective, we really like this. They're very community-minded, which was something else that we really appreciated. It ties in with our Main Street project because in the, in the meantime, what Crowley has been doing is basically creating a new downtown. We've been in the process of completely demolishing our old Main Street that was open culverts to where now it's curb gutter, bike lanes, public art, landscaping. And so it's really kind of a rebirth, if you will, of, of downtown Crowley, as well as a two-acre plaza that will be going under construction later in the fall. And so between this and the Nehemiah project, it's really an exciting time for us in Crowley. As you can see here, this is the layout of the Caris development. You can see the, the green belt and the parks located throughout the development. Also, the Crowley ISD will be building an elementary school within the development and they too are very excited about this project. This has been something that they committed to in a very early timeframe to get a school into that development. And so from a total community perspective, we're very, very, very excited and happy to have them coming online. So the value, so the Caris development in and of itself is expected to have a value of over $694 million. By 2052, the entire zone is projected to have a value of over $797 million for the entire zone again. Originally, in our initial TERS project and financing plan, we had projected the total value of the district to be at $215 million. So as you can see, that's about a half billion dollar increase in value to this district, which benefits all of us. The zone revenues, so you can see there on the left, the participation rates of all the taxing entities. The zone revenues, it's, it's estimated that there will be 189.8 million over the life of the zone. The original zone revenues were projected at 20.8 million. So again, revenues follow in line with the values, the increase in values. So we have the increase in revenues, which is also very exciting for us. And this also gives us a clearer picture of what's going on. That's the reason for the Great Gap. Again, initially it was city-initiated without a developer and now we're turning with a developer and so that, that picture is much clearer for us as to what this is going to look like over time. The project costs range from everywhere from 156 million towards the Caris development as well as money for downtown revitalization, retail mixed-use and also the municipal facilities is also on there. So those are the base project costs and the base project cost total 172,357,022. So at the end of the day, we've extended the life of the TERS from 2038 to 2052. We've increased the size of the zone by 72 acres, but we've also increased the projected revenues from 20.8 million to 189.8 million. We've also increased the value from 215 million to 797 million. What we are asking for in this updated TERS plan is to have the TCCD increase their participation from a cap at 1.5 million over the life of the TERS to 13.1 million. Now also keep in mind that you're a 50% participant in the TERS. So that also means that your revenues were going to be projected initially at 1.5 million and are now projected to be 13 million. So that's quite an increase in revenues for the district, for the college. City participation increases from 13.2 million to 121.3 million. And then Tarrant County has approved the TERS agreement on their end, the updated agreement. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack. Mr. Reed, we do have closed session items?
So we'll now temporarily adjourn our open meeting and go into closed session and we will have a, about a 10-minute break. and go into closed session, and we will have about a 10-minute break.
Okay, we will now reconvene in open session. And I would like to note that with all of the items on the agenda, I suggest we take an extra week off and give the employees a wonderful spring break. And we will convene our board meeting on March 25th at 6:00.
Mr. President, before you call for the motion to adjourn, might I make a request?
Well, you mentioned what? I'm sorry.
May I make a request?
Certainly.
You need to smile when you say that, Mr. President.
Certainly.
Thank you. I would ask the chancellor to bring forward information on the following five items at the earliest time that we can have a complete and adequate review. Number one, a state of preparedness for the college district in terms of the impact of the snowstorm on us and our facilities and what costs we might incur as a result of it. And recommendations for future repairs or preparation that might need to be put in place. Number two, graduation plans for the coming months. Number three, the impact of the governor's 100% order on college operations and board functions in the next six months. And a thorough review of the practices, policies, and procedures for credentialing in the college. And number two, now the last one is a review of the practices, policies, and procedures for tenure, the history at the college. The last thing would be capacity building. What are we doing to address the rebuilding of TCC in terms of reinventing ourselves, in terms of faculty, staff, and employees that will be necessary to carry the district forward over the next 20 years? Thank you.
Other than that, is there anything else?
That's all. Thank you so much.
Okay, very good. Thank you. By the way, Mr. Barr has suggested, and we've talked to Carol about this, that we put an item on the agenda every month. That would be suggestions from the board for future agenda items. And so your suggestions fit into that category. So appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate your wisdom, Mayor Barr. I greatly value your insight.
If there's no further business, I think we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you. If there's no further business, I think we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.